Hi, my name is Jerry McCann. I'm the former councilman from Ward A and the former mayor of Jersey City. We're here today for the debate of the Ward A candidates, or more commonly known as the Greenville Ward. And two of the candidates are here with us today, this evening. One is on his way, so hopefully he'll be able to arrive in a short while. But the first candidate in the first booth is Denise Ridley, who is running on the ticket of Stephen Philip, the incumbent mayor. And in the second booth in the center is Pamela Johnson, who's running as an independent. One of my neighbors, both of them are my neighbors, and I'm very happy to be here with them this evening. We're going to start with a two-minute introduction for each of the candidates to give you a little bit idea of who they are, their involvement in Jersey City, and what they hope to do coming into the next four years. So Denise, you're up.
Good evening. My name is Denise Ridley, and I'm running for the Ward A city council seat. I believe that service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth. That is one of my favorite quotes. I believe that if you cannot serve, you cannot lead, and city council is a serving committee. It is not about one person's agenda, but it's about the community and the residents of Jersey City. I serve in a number of organizations. I'm a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, National Coalition of 100 Black Women, and Rotary Club. I also sit on the board at Maris High School. I sit on the Jersey City Public Safety Review Board. And I'm currently serving my third term, elected to committee woman in Ward A, District 32. I've held voter registration drives, health fairs, meet and greets between police and community, clothing drives, food giveaways, all in Ward A. I am running because I love my ward and I love Jersey City. I believe we're an amazing ward, full of potential, and that is time for us to activate that potential. I am determined, professional, energetic, fair, and compassionate. I know I have what it takes to move Ward A forward and to have the residents help me in that process. So today, I'm asking for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
All right, thank you Denise. The next candidate, Pam Johnson, running as an independent. Pam, I was elected as a somewhat independent, so you're up.
Okay. Well, hi. My name is Pam Johnson, and I am running for your Ward A city councilwoman. I'm a lifelong resident of Jersey City and of Ward A. I grew up on Wade Street, and I live a couple of blocks away on Princeton Avenue. I was born to hard-working parents who had four children, three boys and one girl. I have two children, 25-years-old and 19-years-old, and my daughter just made me a grandma. My granddaughter Samaya is a month old today, so I'm happy about that. So I am running for the Ward A city council seat because we need someone to fight for us. We need someone who is willing to stand up for us and speak when need to be, when things need to be said and done. We haven't had representation in the last four years, and I want to change that. I am the executive director of the Jersey City Anti-Violence Coalition Movement, and we've been doing the much-needed work on the ground to not only combat violence, but to address the root issues, such as poverty, and homelessness, and education, and unemployment, all of those quality-of-life issues that hold people back, that prevents them from moving forward. So I'm running for your Ward A city councilwoman because I know that I can do a good job, because I've been doing it all along with the help of the residents of Ward A. Thank you.
All right. I gave out a topic for the agenda for the meeting, and all the candidates have them. And one of the, I listed it, and you can all see what I've written, the candidates can at least. So I want to ask a very simple question. What can a councilperson do in this office in Ward A? What can you do as it relates, not to each one of these subjects, but I noted, being independent, work with the administration, or vote your conscience? All three of them at some point is going to be part of a decision that you're going to make. So I would like to just hear, we'll start with you Pam, how you feel about each and every one of those topics.
So, as far as being an independent, I'm running as an independent, so I'm doing just that. But I want to stay independent in my choice and in my views of who I choose to support, and me not choosing to run with any mayoral candidate. I am an independent from them, but I am not from the people. I am running for Ward A with the people standing with me and standing behind me and lifting me up. As far as, you know, work with the administration, of course. You can't get things done if you're anti-administration. So although I am a fighter, and although I know that I can hold people accountable and bang some heads sometimes, at the same time, I can work with anyone. And I have done that in my ward and throughout Jersey City. And so I want to continue that process. But I think one thing that's not on here is working with the people of Ward A, because we've had lack of representation, and we want to make sure that we're able to move forward in our ward. But how can we do that if the councilperson does not come directly to the people to figure out what can help them move their life forward? And of course, Jerry, I will always vote with my conscience.
Very good. Denise?
I believe that being independent is very important, and that because a candidate is running on a particular ticket does not mean that they aren't independent and that they're always going to vote the way of the majority of the people represented on that ticket. I think I've always shown independence. I believe that my team is very much aware of that, and if they weren't willing to allow me to have my independence, then I wouldn't have been chosen. I think it's very important for every council candidate to remember who they are and to remember that the decisions that they make are a reflection of them. So I have no problem being an independent person while sitting on city council. Work with the administration, of course, that is important. Compromise is important. Sometimes I feel that we have councilmembers that want to be independent, and sometimes that need to be independent interferes with compromise. So instead of coming to the table and saying, hey, I don't agree with this portion right here, can we fix this? Can we meet in the middle somewhere? It's just combative, combative, combative. But that's not getting anything done. So I believe that it's very important to work with the administration that will be in place. Vote your conscience. You have to vote your conscience. No one wants to go home and then thinking about the decisions that they made. Go with your gut. You know what's right, you know what's wrong, and that's the way you have to vote. And you have to vote for the people in your ward, not based off of what you think, but what you know is good for the people of Ward A and Jersey City as a whole.
Very good. One of the things I supplied you all with was an idea of the voting population in Jersey City, because at times, there's a lot of publicity about the other parts of the city, and they don't really emphasize so much, you know, where the voting strength of the city is. Now, as you can see from those numbers, the voting strength of Jersey City is the southern part of the city. It's Ward A, it's Ward B, and it's Ward F. So it's not what is the perception of downtown and other parts of the city, but the real strength of voting in Jersey City is going to change the outcome of this election, is going to be how the people in Ward A vote, and Ward B vote, and Ward F. So I think that although I'm sure the other candidates from the other wards believe they're equally important, being the former councilman, I think that Greenville is the most important ward, and I'm sure that either one of you could capably do the job. In terms of the breakdown of Ward A too, you'll see the breakdown. It's still overwhelmingly Democratic.
Right.
The voters in Greenville tend to vote Democratic, and that's where the vast majority of the voters are. And then unaffiliated voters is the next largest group. And the other thing I just wanted to point out is that the population in the city in 1970 is now approaching the same numbers in 2015. So that the population once was as large as its city's growing to be, and at one point in the 1930s, we had a population of over 340,000 people. So Jersey City has had a large population, it's declined, and now it seems to be growing back again. So one of the topics that I'll start off with, because it's somewhat controversial, is crime, all right? And the first question that I want to ask both of you is, and we'll start with you Denise this time, is more police. Does having more police stop crime?
I don't believe that more police in itself stops crime. I believe that more police and making sure that they're working effectively helps to combat crime. We have to make sure that there's a good relationship between the police and the community. This also will help in some of the incidents that we see. But I also believe that there are certain things that we could put in place that will assist the cops and will assist with our crime rate. And I've spoken with members of the Jersey City Police Department and members of police departments outside of Jersey City, outside of Hudson County, to get an idea for what's going on in other areas, and maybe there are some things that we can use here in Jersey City. Some of those ideas were the ShotSpotter. This is something that they use in New York, and it detects gunfire and pinpoints the location, because sometimes there are shots fired in certain areas, and unfortunately, some people have become immune to it. So it's not always reported right away. But with something like this in place, it's detected, and you know exactly where it's coming from. Some other suggestions that may work, having a 501(c)(3), having an organization set up to collect money that can be used to pay people for tips. We know that there is a strain between the trust between police and between the community. We have to think of new and innovative ways to get people to give us tips and to let us know when they see something, because right now, it seems like there's really an issue with the community reporting what they're seeing. And also, our district commanders, many of them work during the day, have regular work schedule, but I believe that we should stagger their shifts so that they're around at other hours of the day, and they can get a better feel for the community and what's going on once they've left for the day and gone home. So I think that it's more than just getting more police, but we have to make sure that we are strategic in our efforts.
Pam?
So I know that our police department has grown to 900-plus. As of Thursday, we had our 19th homicide in Hudson County and our 16th in Jersey City. So with that number, and another known number, the fact that shootings are up 200%, it proves that simply adding police officers, which is great, because I work very closely with JCPD, but simply growing the police force is not enough to deter or prevent crime. What I think we should do is have a community engagement component in there that involves the community and different groups and organizations, especially if they're on the ground. There are a lot of groups out here fighting on the ground, and they know exactly what's going on, they know where the crime is, they actually even kind of have a little more information about who's doing the crime. But if we're not connecting the police with the citizens and creating a holistic environment of trust and respect, they won't get any information out of them. I've been looking very closely at what New Orleans is doing, and they're making great strides with community engagement and then implementing the component of community policing. So I think that we need a model where it works in other areas and make sure that we're able to provide that focus here so we can bring a cohesiveness with the police department and the citizens. Right now, they're sort of a strain, and we want to make sure that we're not kind of causing further strain or damage to be done to a non-existing relationship. And so we have to make sure we provide our police officers with training, you know, and with ways to basically kind of mend that strain that's happening with the citizens and the police. And so I just want to make sure that we're able to do that. But the only way that we can do that, if we look and see where things are working in other areas, and we bring it home, and we bring it in a way that it affects our environment and it affects what's going on, and the homicide rate can decrease, and the shootings can decrease, and then we can all live in some sort of harmony.
Very good. Now Pam, you start the next topic, which is community policing. Does it work? Should there be a residency requirement for city police officers beyond one year?
So, community policing works, and I know it works because I've seen it. I grew up, I was born in 1974, and in the 80s and the early 90s, there was a community police component. The police officers knew your name, they knew your mom, your grandmother, your father, your siblings, they knew about you. They knew what schools you went to, the same officers patrolled the same streets, that was his location, his or her location. They walked the beat, they talked to the residents, they went in to greet the business owners. It was one time where they even came in with a form that the business owner had to sign and say, well, you checked on me today. I remember that happening. I remember that. So I know community policing works. It's a philosophy. Community policing is a philosophy, but there is a way to adapt it in areas, it's not the same in every area. We can't do community policing the same way that another area who may not have a big population or a big urban neighborhood population, and we got to, you know, change things up a little bit. But it is a holistic philosophy of basically engagement and coming together as community and kind of getting to know one another. How can we actually protect and serve and help each other if we don't know each other? And I do believe that our police officers should live in the community that they serve. I do want to say that Jersey City is not the most affordable place to live. And with our police officers coming in at a decreased rate as they did 10 years ago, 12 years ago, now it was $40,000 with a seven-pay scale for, you know, top salary, now it's $37,000 with a 10-step pay scale for top salary. And, you know, so there are some issues that needs to be worked out if we want our police officers to live here, but I definitely think that they should live in the community they serve. But I want to make sure it's affordable, not only for them, but for the residents that they're here to protect.
Very good. Denise?
Okay. Community policing. I believe in community policing. For one, when you have that relationship between the community and police, it eases some of that tension. And I believe that there's a lot of tension right now with the current climate between police and communities. So I think that it's very important for us to put that initiative at the forefront here in Jersey City, to make sure that our cops are comfortable in the neighborhoods that they're patrolling, and that our residents are comfortable with the cops that are patrolling their neighborhood. So community policing is very important, and I believe we need more cops that are engaged in our communities, that are showing up to our community meetings, outside of the captain's meetings. When there's something going on in the community, there's a meeting at the Bethune Center, or there's a meeting at 20 School, we need to see more of a presence of our police officers so that we know that they really engage and they're vested in our community. As far as residency requirements, I believe that we do need to take another look at the rules that are currently on the books for residency requirements with regards to police, with regards to fire, with regards to civil service jobs in general. I think that when you are from the area that you're policing, you're much more comfortable, you understand the residents more, and there's not as much tension. So we need to make sure that before our officers or soon-to-be officers are even taking the tests, that we're checking those residency requirements. And that's another way for us to get more Jersey City residents on the job. So I believe that those residency requirements really need to be reviewed, and that that will hopefully increase the relationship between police and community, and definitely increase the residents in Jersey City who are getting on the job.
Very good. The next topic is incarceration. Denise, we're going to start with you. Does it work, and does it work the way it should?
I don't believe incarceration works the way that it should. I believe the system is very flawed, and as you can tell from the numerous offenses that some people have, it's like a vicious cycle. It's like, once you're in that system, you keep going back, and you keep going back, and you keep going back. So clearly, we're doing something wrong. There's not any training going on, there's nothing for you when you come out. And here in Jersey City, we are lucky to have some reentry programs here, and one of the top reentry programs here in Jersey City. So I think that that's helpful, but there needs to be more done, more done, not only at the city level, but at the state level. We need help from prosecutor's office, we need help from our judicial system, because I really don't believe that the system right now is helpful at all. You know, you go to jail, you get home, you can't find a job, you go right back into the streets, and we have to stop that vicious cycle. We need more access to social services, we need more job fairs, we need more resources for our community, especially in Ward A. We need those resources because we want to live in a ward that is sustaining itself, and we want to have residents that are working and that don't have to worry about hitting someone over the head and trying to rob them or standing on a street corner, because they know that they have somewhere to go to find help. And right now, those resources are very, very limited.
Pam?
So, my stepdad is the retired ward in the Hudson County Jail, so incarceration is a main topic that we discuss from time to time. And in fact, I remember when he first came here from DC, that he implemented a system in the jail where, because there weren't any job training, there wasn't any resources within the jail, and this was a while ago. And he had the service come in where the police department gave them the old cars, and the inmates would work on the cars and learn mechanics. He also had them join a choir, and every Sunday, a certain number of inmates would come out of that Hudson County Correctional Facility and attend Claremont Lafayette Presbyterian Church and sing to the congregation. Those are not in existence anymore. However, there are programs within the prison, within the prisons and the jail systems, that they have been trying to see if they're going to work, what's going on. So they're trying a little bit, right? But what I want to say is incarceration as a whole doesn't necessarily work when it comes to rehabilitation, and it doesn't necessarily prevent recidivism. And so that is an issue, and that is a problem. And our current reentry program, I believe, doesn't teach people how to fish. And when I say that, I say from resume building, to interviewing, mock interviews, to knowing how to dress on an interview, to, you know, basically being able to sit in front of an employer and discuss why you're the best woman or man for the job. Individuals coming out of incarceration do not necessarily have the biggest confidence level. And so we have to make sure that we're building them up, because the world will tear them down, just for being incarcerated. Although, we all believe in second chances, but not many people really do.
Now, we're lucky now to have our third candidate, Rick Johnson, who didn't have an opportunity to introduce himself, so we're going to break from the topic at this point. Allow yourself to introduce yourself to the audience.
Thank you.
And then you'll be able to speak on the next, the same topic, which is incarceration. So go ahead, Rick.
Thank you. I'd like to, once again, apologize to the viewing audience, we got stuck in traffic. But my name is Rick Johnson. I'm a lifelong resident of Jersey City. I was born and raised in Jersey City all my life. I'm married to Stacy, my wife, we married two kids, Shayla and Richard. I have, I worked for Hudson County Corrections Prison Reentry Program, helped incarcerated men that's incarcerated, women that's incarcerated. I worked the prison reentry program. What we do is help ex-offenders find jobs, training, life skills, addiction services we support, and also, what we like to do is find them jobs. I work with ex-offenders, veterans, we help veterans find housing. I identify veterans and help them get better resources. I'm sorry, I'm kind of stubborn right now, running kind of late.
That's okay.
I work with the National Fatherhood Initiative. I'm a national facilitator for the Fatherhood Initiative in the United States. And about prison reentry, I worked prison reentry for the past 13 years. What I do, I help ex-offenders that's getting released from jail, we help them find jobs, training, and to better themselves and become productive citizens of society. What I also do, I work with the vets, the VA, identify vets in the prison and link them up with VA services. Also, what we also do at the jail, we have a one-stop there to help them find jobs, training, GED writing, and educational skills. Why I'm running for council for Ward A in Jersey City is, these are people, our ex-offenders that's returning back to the city with no jobs, no training, no type of skills. So what we do with reentry, we help them find a job, we help them with training, and provide them the best hope that they try to do to be a productive citizen of society.
Very good. Rick, so you kind of answered both your intro and your answer to incarceration. So as it turns out now, you start the next topic. So it's about crime, but education, does education have an impact as it relates to crime or the prevention of crime?
Yes, it does. Well, what we need to do is have some type of skills, training program in Ward A. We don't have no type of training program when these guys are getting released from jail. They need a training program to help them get educated. What I want to do, if I become councilman in Ward A, I want to start a training facility up in Ward A. Where what I do right now in my church at Mount Calvary Baptist Church in Jersey City, I run a prison reentry program there at Mount Calvary, and what we do, we train them in life skills. With my Fatherhood Initiative, I teach them to be better fathers and to be a better productive citizen of society. Now, also, guys that's returning home from prison, a lot of them can't get jobs because most of them don't have an ID. So what we do, we give them IDs when they leave in the jail, and an ID is a point or two points going to motor vehicles to help them get a driver's license. Also, most of the guys can't read or write, so what I did, I brought a paint program into the jail. We started on a fifth-grade reading level where these guys learn how to read, and they get a paint certificate and commercial painting with Pittsburgh Paints. We have two instructors that were there, they're not there anymore, for some reason, the budget didn't fit to bring the program back to the jail, but it was working. I think I got about, we probably employed about maybe 40, 50 guys that was coming out of jail and got them jobs in commercial painting so they could compete with these big companies that are at the waterfront. They got a skill, they got a certificate in commercial painting. Also, what we do, what I was doing at the jail, we would give them some type of training as far as what I want to do with construction, plumbing, electrical, any type of trade, so that when they get a job, and they could get a job, they could keep their job, their own entrepreneurship, they could start their own business. So a lot of guys, when they get employed by certain companies, companies, the first thing they have to say, oh, we got to let you go because you're an ex-offender. So now, we make them entrepreneurs, they can start their own business and get their own lives together and keep their own jobs, their own business, they can't get laid off because it's their business.
All right. Pam?
Education is key for anything you do in life. Education, it brings information, it brings a lesson, and it shows you what to do in the next steps of your life. I think that when it comes to incarceration and reentry, our young men and women, and some juveniles, because juveniles also, you know, get arrested, they're left behind. And it's like, we're not empowering them and giving them the tools they need to basically live their best life. And so this is why we need free workshops, seminars, and informational sessions in Ward A, and particularly throughout Jersey City, that addresses this need of having reentry and giving education and information to the people. I mean, that's what it's about, teaching people how to move forward in their lives. I think we should start vetting our educational institutions and asking them, would they like to be involved in such a process? I think it's great when people can say, I helped someone turn their life around. And so our educational institutions are right here, right here in Jersey City, in Ward A as well, and I think we need to vet them and see if this is something that they want to come on board with. We can do this together, but we cannot continue to go down the same path, because it's like we're leaving a certain population behind. I want to also say that it seems like when you talk about incarceration and reentry, people seem to think, because I've talked to many folks, that it's just a brown and black problem, but it's not. People who are incarcerated are of every nationality, every race, every culture, whether it's white crime, white-collar crime, or any other kind of crime. We need to start treating our ex-offenders the same. So give our individuals who are in the urban community the same opportunities as one would get in the suburbs who's arrested for marijuana, or who's arrested for committing a white-collar crime. So I think that when we say, crime is crime, reentry is reentry, no matter where you live and no matter who you are, we can give people the same opportunities that others have in other places.
Denise?
I'm a big champion of education. You know, the more you know, the better off you are in life with regards to jobs and everything else. When you go to interview for jobs, you need that education. So we have this system, and people are going into the system and going into jails, and then when they come home, they're not educated. What happened to programs inside the jails that helped our inmates get GEDs, or helped them to study, helped them to, basically set them up for when they get back out so that they won't fall into that same trap? And at that same time, prevention- And at that same time, prevention is better than cure. So why aren't we doing more at the high school level? Because a lot of times, our kids graduate high school and then what's next? How are we setting them up for the future? I know currently, we're running a new program at Maris High School where we're partnering with the Hudson County Community College. And kids are able to earn credits while they're still at Maris. And that helps to encourage them to go to college. But everyone isn't going to go to college, but for the kids that are, we need to put that process in place. It makes it easier for our kids in Jersey City to progress and to have a successful life. What happened to making sure that our kids know how to use their hands? The shop classes, learning cosmetology, learning how to cook, all of these things are definitely needed. Everyone isn't going to go to college, but that does not mean that you can't still make a good living. And if we put those things in place in the beginning, it will keep a lot of people from turning towards the streets. We need to catch these kids while they're young. Catch them while they're young and, you know, teach them the way. Sometimes it takes a little handholding and I don't think that we do enough of that early on. And I think that that adds to the incarceration rate. And once they're in jail, they're certainly not getting all of the tools that they need because they're in the system.
Denise, this is a long topic. So the next sector is drugs. How do we address this problem of addiction and how do we deal with drug dealers?
This problem of addiction, this is, especially now with the heroin epidemic, is something that has, we see it like every day on our TV screens, right? On the news, on CNN, on our nightly news, we always see this. And I believe that addiction, it's a problem. And I think we need to recognize it's a problem and that it's a condition, just as alcoholism or just as a mental disorder. It is a condition. And we need not turn our nose up at these people who are addicted to drugs, but we need to make sure that there are resources there to help them if they are ready for that help. I think that we need some more drug rehabilitation programs in the area, definitely. And we need to have access to those types of services readily available for our residents. I personally don't see any when I'm traveling around. The other part of that question, drug dealers. I believe that we need to start cutting this off at the root. So that's not to say that we shouldn't arrest drug dealers that you see standing on the corner if they have committed a crime. If they have committed a crime, then they have committed a crime. But they didn't get the drugs and the guns from that spot. There has to be someone at the top that is pushing this stuff into our community. And I don't feel like we do enough to address that issue and it just keeps coming. And there's a younger generation and a new drug dealer because we're not addressing the problem at the root. And we are constantly sending people in and out of jail for some smaller crimes, some larger crimes. And drug dealing is an issue, yes, we know that. But we're not going to be able to resolve that issue until we attack at the source. And I think that that's an issue, not only in Jersey City, but in a lot of areas. We need to attack at the source.
Pam?
So I've been hearing lately about this opioid epidemic that we're having right now in the United States of America in 2017. However, I grew up on the South Side. And I've been, I went, I grew up and saw the crack epidemic, the opioid epidemic, the alcoholism epidemic, and so many other things that's going on in our community. But because it was deemed to be on people who were mainly black and brown, there was not this much attention going on. But now there is because it has hit suburban neighborhoods and younger children. And so what I say that to say, we have to, just like I said with education and incarceration, we have to make sure that we're treating people fairly. Doesn't matter what color you are. If it's going to be an epidemic now, it should have been an epidemic in the 90s and it should go on to stay an epidemic in every community. But I'll put that on my city. The city of Jersey City needs to raise awareness about the epidemic that's going on with drugs. Okay, you can walk down certain corners and certain streets and you see drug afflicted individuals. And it's so sad. And I talk to them to find out what's going on, if that conversation can be had, and try to, you know, bring some resources to them. I think that the Health Department needs to get involved. When I was younger and we had that This Is Your Brain on Drugs commercial, I remember that egg frying in the pan. It was just an egg to adults, but to me, it was actually my brain on drugs. And so I think that we have to make sure we're bringing visual techniques, campaigns, social media campaigns, billboards, and make that problem a black, white, and brown problem. Don't make it a black and brown problem. And don't decide to make it an epidemic when it's affecting suburban neighborhoods. So I think that we have to focus on the issue, make sure we're treating people fairly, bring more resources to our community that will address these things. And I want to say that when you're dealing with a drug addict, you don't know what they're going through. You don't know, you have no clue how they wake up and what goes on throughout the day and how they go to sleep. So let's not put a stigma on that. Instead, look deep within your heart and let's find a way to fix it. But we're not going to fix it until our city declares that it's a problem. We can't wait for it to be a national problem. It needs to be a local issue that we address together. So, you know, I think that we have to make sure that we're hitting that nail on the head and finding ways to help individuals who are addicted to drugs. When it comes to drug dealers, I occupy the corners with Jersey City Anti-Violence. So I talk to a lot of drug dealers. And I know that lack of opportunities have young men and women out there selling drugs on the corners. So you want to solve the drug dealing problem? People don't want to see them in their community? Well, we're going to need the city to do a better job at bringing resources and opportunity to Ward A.
Drug dealers have been going on in Jersey City for years. I worked the prison reentry program. Drug addicts are coming in and out of the jail every day. I don't know what part of the city, I know where Pam lived, I know where Mr. Denise lived. She's seen drug addicts in the city. They're all over Jersey City, especially in Ward A and Ward F. You know, I talk to most of these guys, most of these guys in our program. I see them every day. Just the other day, I was walking on Winfield and Bergen. Winfield and Bergen is an open-air drug market. Down below Winfield, 30 to 40 kids hanging out on the corner selling drugs, dealing drugs. Up on Bergen and Winfield, drug dealers up there selling drugs. There's houses on Winfield that is selling drugs out of. Walking on Bergen the other day after campaigning, there's a sign in the park that says, no boom boxes after a certain amount of hours in the park or you'll be fined or jailed within 90 days or a thousand dollar fine. But it's open air drug market around there every day. You can sell drugs constantly every day. The cops ride by idly and don't do anything to these guys on the corner that's selling drugs. I live on Winfield below the Boulevard. I watch people come from Bayonne, get off the bus, walk down to Winfield and Ocean or Winfield and Bergen, get their drugs, walk right back through the park, get on their bus and go back to Bayonne. Since the benches came back to Winfield Park, I was advocating to get the benches out of Winfield Park. Now the benches are back. We have homelessness sleeping in the park. We got open drug addicts sleeping in the park. You find needles in the playground. People are sleeping in the playground at night. And when you call the cops, the cops says nothing they can do, they ain't doing anything. But isn't loitering a crime? So what I'm saying is, we need to get the cops out the street, out the police cars, have them engaged in the community. Talk to the community, talk to the people in the community. We are taxpayers in Jersey City. We pay taxes as well. So if you get the cops engaged in the community, let them know who belongs in the community, who don't belong. Not every day, just get out the car with a warrior mindset. We have to make them have a guardian mindset and talk to the people and be there for the people. So of course, there's drug addicts going on in Jersey City, drug dealing going on in Jersey City. You see it every day. Get off the bus, walk the streets of Jersey City, you'll see it. Open air drug market, drug dealing going on. These are our kids that are being hurt out there every day, being shoot, being shot at, being killed. The mayor hasn't spoken, none of his council candidates have spoken about the shootings that's going on in Jersey City. Our kids are dying. And we need to change what's going on in city government. Stop worrying about what's going on downtown. Ward F and A are the forgotten wards. We need to worry about F and A. Bring some type of job training, some skills to get these kids jobs and get them off the streets. Thank you.
Rick, I'll just tell you something in common. I also live on Winfield Avenue, down below Ocean Avenue. And I know that Pam lived right down at the foot of Winfield and Princeton Avenue at 1.2. So Winfield Avenue somehow is a connection to this.
Yeah, and my campaign office is purposely on Winfield and Ocean because the area needs a lot of love. It really does.
Okay, so the next topic is recreation. Can recreation help in terms of fighting crime? Your input.
Yes, it will help. Right now, there's no recreations in Ward and F. If the kids need to go somewhere, they have to go to the Heights. We need, what we will build is a state-of-the-art recreation center on Ward A, something for these kids to do, some type of recreation. We had basketball camps, everything is in the Heights. Swimming is in the Heights, hockey's in the Heights. When I was coming up, we had baseball, we had Little League at Lincoln Park. We had baseball, we had basketball, we had all that, all the activities you could do in Jersey City for the kids that are at Ward. I grew up on the West Side, so Babe Ruth League was the league I played in. And we played baseball, softball, you name it. It was always something to do for the kids to do after school. Right now, there's nothing for the kids to do after school. Like I said, once again, Winfield Avenue, you see the kids congregating on the corner, you ride by at any time of the day, day or night, they're out there because there's nothing for the kids to do. They need some type, like I, once again, I keep hitting on this because we had training coming up. We had cedar, where we worked for the summer, have our money, go get our school codes for school for September. You know, right now, they don't have none of that. You know, the only program that they have over here for the mayor is sweep the streets. The kids sweeping the streets. There's no type of entrepreneurial training for the kids to go down to City Hall, learn how to be a, what do you call it, an executive. They want them to do janitors, sweeping the streets. That's not a good example for our kids. Our kids need, like Denise said, they need some type of training where as though they could get out there and learn to be a better person. Everybody's not going to go to college. You're right. No one's going to go to college, but everyone's not going to go to college. Let me change that. But if you have a skill, like we had auto body repair in school, we had shop, wood shop, we had cooking coming up when we were coming up, they don't have none of that. They don't have bands in school now. At least the kids that have the bands, they could go do strutters, cheerleaders, all that. You don't have none of that. Learn how to play instruments, they took that out of school. So we need to get back and work with the schools and to have all these things so the kids can have something to do inside the streets and outside the streets of Jersey City. Keep them off the streets.
Pam?
So when it comes to recreation, I met with the director of recreation, Kevin. And so I wanted to learn, and this was a while ago, I wanted to learn exactly what new recreation was coming to Jersey City, what new programs, initiatives, and how were we getting that information out and funneling it to the community. And so I learned that there is, there are various recreation programs that all relates to swimming, lacrosse, basketball, football. Seems like it's an all-sports thing, which is fine. I was an athlete, I played basketball. Rick did mention that a lot of the things are up in the Heights, which is true. But what I've, what I've seen when I was growing up was recreation was right outside your door, in your backyard, and not literally, but figuratively, close by in a park, Bayside Park, you know, going down by Curry's Woods or even in Bayonne Park because that was close in the community. And Stevens Park at the time. But what I want to say is that we need quality recreation programs and not just sports-related. We need recreation programs that teach you how to compete with everyone else, whether they're here in Jersey City or across the country. We need programs and recreation that's going to teach you how to do STEM and teach you how to work on your homework or do a science project. We need other things that stimulate the mind, not necessarily, you know, just a workout. So I like sports and I think recreation is great when it comes to that, but we need quality programming and education inside of our recreation system that will help our kids not only decide what their future will be, but identify whatever skill they have in them that they just didn't pull out yet.
Very good. Denise?
I believe that there are a lot of programs through Jersey City Recreation. Of course, there can always be more. But I think part of the problem is figuring out how to get the, our troubled youth to get engaged in those programs. Because you have people who come from decent homes and whose parents are involved, they're going to send them to those programs. We have to find ways to get our youth that aren't engaged and who have parents that aren't engaged to those programs. Another issue, as Rick mentioned, is that there are a lot of activities at Persian Field. We need more resources from Jersey City Recreation to move kids from the South Side of the city to those activities. If we have our city buses, we can use those to transport kids to those locations. There's not going to be the same thing in every ward. There's not going to be, you know, a skating rink in every ward. But if we can have the resources to make sure that our kids can get there, then that helps a lot. Also, I hear a lot of people say that, you know, when I was younger, we were in Little League or we were playing basketball together and that really helped and kids need more sports and they need more recreation. But times have changed and we need to make sure that we're providing recreational activities that kids of today are interested in. Music. Teach them, you know, how to work in a studio, how to produce music, graphics, TV and production, things of that nature. Our kids are very visual, they're very connected to social media and to the computer, and these are things that might draw more kids in. Everyone is not going to be a star athlete. Also, in Ward A, during the mayor's State of the City address, he did say that he was working on starting a five-acre park right in Ward A. So that is definitely something that if I am elected and even if I am not elected, that I intend to remind him of and to hold him to, that we make sure that we get a newer park in Ward A with some of those resources that we see in a Persian Field or Berry Lane.
Okay, we're going to take a little break for a while and we'll be right back with
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments, and Markers. 787 Tunley Avenue, Jersey City. Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all faiths and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory on site. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments, and Markers. 787 Tunley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hoppin', North Arlington. Visit us on the net.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights. Your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments, carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants, all major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets is saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets, price to fit your budget, installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City.
Good Friends Self-Storage in North Bergen, New Jersey is a fully climate-controlled facility equipped with state-of-the-art security, packing supplies, a refer friend program, and multiple loading docks, convenient for commercial use. Located just off of Route 3 at 4301 Tunley Avenue, Route 1 and 9. Call 201-867-2444 or visit us on the web today. Good Friends Self-Storage, let us be your good friend.
Introducing the MyJCMC app powered by Practice Unite. The free MyJCMC app puts the power of healthcare at your fingertips. Go to the concierge for access to referrals, scheduling, and appointments, see emergency room wait times, and get directions to Jersey City Medical Center health locations. Read the latest JCMC news through their social media feed, find a doctor, and more. The MyJCMC app, we belong to you.
It takes more than a state-of-the-art medical facility to make a great hospital. It takes a team of dedicated medical professionals. That's the Jersey City Medical Center, Hudson County's number-one hospital. Medical teams consisting of New Jersey's top doctors, magnet award-winning nurses, and accomplished hospital associates all committed to your good health. That's what you have at the Jersey City Medical Center. Make Hudson County's number-one hospital your first choice. Visit us on the web at barnabishhealth.org.
Monique Car Care. Conveniently located at 700 Tunley Avenue, Jersey City, half a mile north of County Road. Monique, bumper-to-bumper car care. Brakes, exhaust, oil change, wheel alignments, batteries, CV joints, and so much more. First-rate service at a price you can afford. All major cards accepted. Apply for a Monique card. Monique, Jersey City. Stop by and let Sami check your brakes for free.
Newport, the luxury waterfront community on the Hudson River offers a quality of life you deserve in 10 high-rise rental towers with amenities such as the onsite Newport Path subway, light rail and ferry service, Newport Town Square, three playgrounds, dog run, upscale restaurants, retail giants like Sears, JCPenney, Macy's, and Target. Morton Williams supermarket is just outside your front door. A health and fitness club, spa, skating rink, and medical facilities are also on site. NewportNJ.com. Enjoy the New York skyline from Newport Town Square. Manhattan is just one path stop away or quick ride through the Holland Tunnel. Nursery and private elementary schools all on site. 12-screen movie theater at the Newport Center Mall. Want to visit Newport? Stay at the Western or Marriott Hotel. Go to NewportNJ.com for details. Newport has luxurious towers, great restaurants, shopping, New York skyline views, schools, playgrounds, a marina and yacht club, gym, spa, fine wine, fine living. It's incredible, it's you, NewportNJ.com, Newport, live like you want.
Penna Pinto Properties, Jersey City. Shape in the workplace with state-of-the-art office spaces that address your company desires. Building residences that define your home environment. Adjacent to all modes of transportation with on-site parking available. The right address, the right lease. Call 201-521-9000 or visit online at pennapintoproperties.com. Penna Pinto Properties, building Jersey City for everyone.
Plaza Auto Body, 700 Tunley Avenue in Jersey City. Your local collision specialist. Body and fender repair, on-site oven baked paint work, fiberglass repair experts. Custom and classic car restoration, all insurance is welcome. 24-hour towing available. Licensed by the state of New Jersey. Plaza Auto Body, 700 Tunley Avenue, 201-222-3050. Plaza Auto Body, your bumper-to-bumper buddy.
Rama Jewelers, located in the Lindhurst Shopping Center at 413 Valley Brook Avenue, Lindhurst. Come for all your jeweler needs at Rama Jewelers where you will find a fine selection of necklaces, earrings, rings and bracelets. Choose from one of our complete sets, our many signature items or find the perfect engagement ring. Come on down, that's Rama Jewelers at 413 Valley Brook Ave, Lindhurst. Call 201-939-5784 or visit us online today.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tunley Avenue, Jersey City. Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all fates and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory on-site. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tunley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hoppin', North Arlington. Visit us on the net.
Consumer Carpets, 3408 Kennedy Boulevard in the Jersey City Heights. Your one-stop store for residential and commercial floor treatments, carpeting, linoleum, tiles, laminates, hardwood floors, area rugs, remnants. All major brands, all in stock. Free estimates, same-day installation. Consumer Carpets, it's saving, selection, installation. Credit cards and debit cards accepted. Financing available. Consumer Carpets, price to fit your budget, installation to fit your schedule. On the net at consumercarpets.com. Consumer Carpets, Jersey City, 201-792-2712.
Good Friend Self-Storage in North Bergen, New Jersey is a fully climate-controlled facility equipped with state-of-the-art security, packing supplies, a refer friend program and multiple loading docks convenient for commercial use. Located just off of Route 3 at 4301 Tunley Avenue, Route 1 and 9. Call 201-867-2444 or visit us on the web today. Good Friend Self-Storage, let us be your good friend.
Introducing the MyJCMC app powered by Practice Unite. The free MyJCMC app puts the power of healthcare at your fingertips. Go to the concierge for access to referrals, scheduling and appointments, see emergency room wait times and get directions to Jersey City Medical Center health locations, read the latest JCMC news through their social media feed, find a doctor and more. The MyJCMC app, we belong to you.
It takes more than a state-of-the-art medical facility to make a great hospital. It takes a team of dedicated medical professionals. That's the Jersey City Medical Center, Hudson County's number-one hospital. Medical teams consisting of New Jersey's top doctors, magnet award-winning nurses and accomplished hospital associates all committed to your good health. That's what you have at the Jersey City Medical Center. Make Hudson County's number-one hospital your first choice. Visit us on the web at barnabishhealth.org.
Monique Car Care, conveniently located at 700 Tunley Avenue, Jersey City, half a mile north of County Road. Monique, bumper-to-bumper car care. Brakes, exhaust, oil change, wheel alignments, batteries, CV joints and so much more. First-rate service at a price you can afford. All major cards accepted. Apply for a Monique card. Monique, Jersey City. Stop by and let Sammy check your brakes for free.
Newport, the luxury waterfront community on the Hudson River offers a quality of life you deserve in 10 high-rise rental towers with amenities such as the onsite Newport Path Subway, light rail and ferry service, Newport Town Square, three playgrounds, dog run, upscale restaurants, retail giants like Sears, JCPenney, Macy's and Target. Morton Williams supermarket is just outside your front door. A health and fitness club, spa, skating rink and medical facilities are also on-site. NewportNJ.com. Enjoy the New York skyline from Newport Town Square. Manhattan is just one path stop away or quick ride through the Holland Tunnel. Nursery and private elementary schools all on-site. 12-screen movie theater at the Newport Center Mall. Want to visit Newport, stay at the Western or Marriott Hotel. Go to NewportNJ.com for details. Newport has luxurious towers, great restaurants, shopping, New York skyline views, schools, playgrounds, a marina and yacht club, gym, spa, fine wine, fine living. It's incredible, it's you, NewportNJ.com, Newport, live like you want.
Penna Pinto Properties, Jersey City. Shape in the workplace with state-of-the-art office spaces that address your company desires. Building residences that define your home environment. Adjacent to all modes of transportation with on-site parking available. The right address, the right lease. Call 201-521-9000 or visit online at pennapintoproperties.com. Penna Pinto Properties, building Jersey City for everyone.
Plaza Auto Body, 700 Tunley Avenue in Jersey City. Your local collision specialist. Body and fender repair, on-site oven baked paint work, fiberglass repair experts. Custom and classic car restoration, all insurance is welcome. 24-hour towing available. Licensed by the state of New Jersey. Plaza Auto Body, 700 Tunley Avenue, 201-222-3050. Plaza Auto Body, your bumper-to-bumper buddy.
Rama Jewelers, located in the Lindhurst Shopping Center at 413 Valley Brook Avenue, Lindhurst. Come for all your jeweler needs at Rama Jewelers where you will find a fine selection of necklaces, earrings, rings and bracelets. Choose from one of our complete sets, our many signature items or find the perfect engagement ring. Come on down, that's Rama Jewelers at 413 Valley Brook Ave, Lindhurst. Call 201-939-5784 or visit us online today.
Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tunley Avenue, Jersey City. Hudson County's only monument maker, serving all fates and cemeteries. Design studio and large inventory on-site. Cemetery inscriptions and custom orders welcome. Burns Brothers Memorials, Monuments and Markers, 787 Tunley Avenue, just south of Secaucus Road. Craftsmanship that will last for all eternity. Burns Brothers, Jersey City, Albert H. Hoppin', North Arlington. Visit us on the net.
We're back with Ward A debate with our three candidates, Denise Ridley, Pamela Johnson and Rick Johnson. The topic, which is on the mind of both barrel candidates, and I'm sure on the mind of all three candidates here, is affordable housing. And we're going to start, where did we end before with Denise? So we'll start with Denise. Where is it needed in Greenville and how can we develop more affordable housing in the Greenville section?
I believe that affordable housing is needed throughout Greenville. We don't want to restrict affordable housing to just one section of our ward. I also believe that affordable housing can get a little tricky with regards to guidelines and guidelines that are passed down with income limitations coming from HUD and come from the federal government that must be followed in that process as well. I find that a lot of times, we have a lot of working families and working single people in our ward and they fall somewhere in the middle. They're, they're still living paycheck to paycheck, they're not rich, but they don't meet the low-income guidelines and there's not enough for that middle group. And I believe that that's what we're lacking. So I believe that affordable housing is very necessary and that it will help a lot of our families in Ward A and that we need to take the time to really address that issue and to make sure that the residents in Ward A can stay in Ward A. We are seeing more development occur in Ward A and we do not want what has happened in some other areas to happen and have our Ward A residents pushed out. So we need to make sure that we are keeping our ward affordable for the residents that live here now and to attract new residents that are like-minded people and working families and going to work every day and want to build families in Ward A. They shouldn't have to leave and go to another city or move out to the suburbs. They should be able to come to Ward A.
Pam?
So everyone deserves and needs access to safe and affordable housing and decent housing. I'm one of those individuals that Denise speaks of. If it wasn't for my two adult children to help offset the rental costs, there's no way I would be able to live in my community. And that's the same community I was born and raised in. And it's unfortunate, but for a lot of people, they don't have children living with them to offset those expenses. And so affordable housing is going to be a permanent item on the agenda. We need to look at additional funding such as fusion of private and public funds, the merging of corporate and banking and with nonprofits, solicitation of foreign capital, and these are all things to explore. These are all things needed. We need to beef up the Affordable Housing Trust. We need to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the residents of Ward A. And under this administration, they're looking, Trump administration, they're looking to cut and abolish some of the funding under HUD. What exactly would that do for Ward A and for Jersey City as a whole? And so that's why we have to find creative ways to bring funding and resources here so we not only have to rely on one source of funding, but we have many sources to make sure we're doing the right thing by the residents of Ward A. There are a lot of residents who had to move out, a lot of seniors who can't afford to live here. I got a call from a 90-year-old woman today, senior, who's having a problem with a foreclosure. You know, there's another young lady, I call them young ladies because they're young to me, but she's 68 years old and she lives in Ward A. And I also talked to her and she's waiting for housing in the Lafayette section at the new senior center. But there's a waiting list, what is she to do until then? There are so many of these stories and so many people being affected in our ward that to, to the city, it seems like they're just that, stories. And so we want to make sure that we're advocating for them. And as your councilwoman, I already advocate for you and I'll continue to do that and think of creative ways to bring funding and much-needed resources to the ward so we can, we're able to build affordable housing units and we're able to make sure that a one-bedroom is not costing $1,500 that you cannot afford. And so I think we need to do better and we will, but with a new councilperson of Ward A and moving forward in our community.
Rick?
What we need to do is create an office of affordable housing to help people, help people find listings of units that they can afford and also help developers that's building these houses be able to build more affordable housing around the city for residents that can't afford to live in Jersey City. And also, what we would do will help residents and people that low-income status be able to find housing in areas that we're not having like as in F, A, D, E that have been priced out. Just recently, I was over in the union call on, yesterday, and we met a Jersey City resident. She was priced out of her house from the Heights. She's now, lives down a block on Bethaldie. And the rent's down there is still kind of substantial, but she's making ends meet with her and her husband. So we need to have an office of affordable housing.
Very good. One of the things that's happening right now in Greenville, I'm sure that all of you have noticed it, is there is a lot of new residents coming into, into the Greenville section and they're buying up a lot of property, a lot of abandoned homes. People are selling them their homes and they're being renovated. What, Rick, we'll start with you. How do you think, is that a good thing for the Greenville section? Is it something that we can sustain?
Well, I welcome it. I welcome new change, I welcome new people into the city. I think it's a great thing. As long as people ain't being pushed out that's been here all their life, I think it's a great thing. And I welcome anybody to start a new business in Jersey City or to start a new family in Jersey City. I think it's a great thing, it's good for the neighborhood and mixed people coming into the community. I think it's great for businesses, I think it's great for everyone.
Pam?
Sounds like you're talking a little bit about gentrification, a little bit. So I, I welcome people coming into the neighborhood, of course. I mean, it's, I do feel like it's my community because I've been there my entire life, but it's not just mine, you know, to myself, like I don't want to keep it hostage. But I do want to say that if people are coming into a community, what they have to realize is the community existed far before they came along. So what I mean by that is, don't come in a community and create your own separate community. Come into a community and be a part of the community. Help solve issues in the community. Talk to your neighbors in the community. You know, so it's just, when you say you want to come into a community and you just want to create your own, that's a problem. You know, people are being pushed out, lifelong residents, who want to stay here, they really do. So we have to make sure that while we're welcoming others in, we're not forgetting about the culture and the history and the heritage that we have in our ward.
Denise?
I'm all for new residents in Ward A, but we want to make sure that they are part of the community as Rick and Pam have both mentioned. We're not looking for residents to come in and not be active participants. We've had an influx of new neighbors on my street and, you know, I knock on their door and, you know, introduce myself and I ask them are they registered to vote? And I bring them voter registration forms because you need to get involved in the community here. I see a lot of times when we speak to newer residents that come in, maybe downtown or in the Heights and other areas of the city, they don't take the time to get engaged in Jersey City. They don't change their voter registration, they don't attend community meetings. They wake up, go to work, come back home and, you know, hang out wherever they hang out or maybe they are interested in downtown. But we need to make sure that you're not only sleeping here, but that you're an active part of the community. So I think that bringing new life and new vibes into the community is good as long as it's positive and as long as they're willing to work with the community that's already here.
Very good. Now Denise, we're going to change a little the topic here. Similar to what we've talked about, but illegal apartments. It's, it's a major problem throughout all of Jersey City. It's not limited to Greenville, it's not limited to downtown or the Heights or anywhere else. It's throughout the city. And what I would like to hear from you is what should we be doing about them? And then is it a problem in Greenville?
Illegal apartments, well, as a landlord, I know that the process sometimes to make sure that your, your apartment is properly converted can be somewhat convoluted. And a lot of what I hear from residents is that they don't know how to properly convert their unit so that things are legal. And what I hear a lot when I am renting apartments in my property, I'll get calls and saying, well, do you have a basement apartment? Do you have an attic apartment? So there are people that are calling for these apartments and sometimes some of these landlords are renting them out illegally. I don't feel that it's right, I feel it creates a fire hazard in some cases and that's something that the city does need to address and be more aggressive on. And I think that the city needs to be aggressive on both sides. They need to be aggressive with making sure that landlords are not renting out illegal apartments. I went down, the other day, I spoke with a guy who has a house on Danford and he ran into this issue with an illegal apartment and he didn't even know it was illegal. So I think at the same time, while we're making sure that landlords are doing what they're supposed to do, we have to make sure that they're informed and that they're, if they are renting these illegal apartments, that they know that it's wrong. Because in some cases, they don't realize that it's wrong. So we need to make sure that these guidelines are out there. When people are purchasing new homes, we need to let them know what they can and cannot do. And, you know, if someone calls you up and they're offering you money, a lot of times people will take it because as we've mentioned on some other topics, it's difficult to make ends meet. So I don't believe that it's malicious, but at the same time, it can lead to a lot of other issues for the residents that are living in those apartments. So we need to attack it on both ends.
Pam?
So we were just talking about illegal apartments and I actually jotted it down because it was, it was astonishing that there are thousands of illegal apartments and if, in fact, they were taxed correctly, it would generate millions of dollars in revenue, right? There needs to be enforcement and there needs to be, I always say, we need a watchdog, right? So a watchdog needs to be everywhere and in every different aspect, department, agency. So we're kind of finding out where these illegal apartments are, taking in inventory and making sure we address the problem. It can indeed be a fire hazard. I used to live in a basement apartment and I found out that apartment was illegal. That was in 1995, I don't live there any longer, but the landlord rented it and it was $1,100, you know, cost every month. So he didn't know it was illegal as he told me, I didn't know it was illegal as a tenant. And so we just have to make sure that when people are purchasing homes or even when you're renting a home, there are agencies that help people secure rent and security and help them with their apartment. We should also be giving them information about tenants' rights and illegal apartments and what to look for and what to know. But that's information, that's education, so we're back to that. It all boils down to education and information and making sure we get that to the people who are actually renting, renting these apartments and to the landlords who are actually buying. who are actually renting these apartments and to the landlords who are actually buying these homes.
Rick?
Affordability. The reason why you have illegal apartments is because it's affordable housing. No one, the rents are too high in Jersey City. No one can afford to live in Jersey City anymore. So I think we need enforcement to enforce these landlords to stop having these illegal apartments and hold the city accountable, enforcement. That's it. Enforce these, enforcement.
Right. So this is somewhat related, so I'm going to throw this in at this point. Parking problems. Do we have a parking problem in Greenville? Rick, you're up.
Yes, we do. I live on Winfield Avenue. It separates Bethaldie and we have people that park, that live, park on Winfield. Come home after 5:00 o'clock, you have to stay there unless you took Uber or transportation because there's no parking around. You got people that park below, that live below Bethaldie, Winfield, Neptune. You see them every day. They park their car, they walk down the block to their house. Now they're having a 74-unit building being built on Kennedy Boulevard, of course, from Providence Bank with no parking. That's going to tire parking again because people that live there, moving in from out of the city, they leave their cars there, they commute to work. So I think we need zoning up there on Winfield Avenue in that area.
Rick, I'm going to just throw this in as an addition. What about restrictions? I know that, I think, other parts of the city have parking zones. So if you want to add something to that.
I think we should have parking zones in, on Winfield, Bethaldie, that area. There's no zone parking, but I think we should have it because residents like me, my wife, or my neighbors, some of them have more than one car in a household, so that's a problem too. But I think we should have zoning in the area.
Pam?
So I was, I made note of the redevelopment you were talking about. That's 1524, 1558 Kennedy Boulevard. And I just want to say a little bit outside of parking. When the plans were given to redevelopment and approved, it had parking.
Yes, it did.
That's the watchdog I'm talking about. This is why things turn out to be the way they are. There was parking in that, in those plans when it was presented to the Department of Planning and they were approved and now there's no parking. That is unacceptable, but nobody was watching the hen house and that's a problem. So back to parking. I live on Princeton Avenue and I live across the street from the light rail and it's terrible. And if you know Princeton, that area between Cater and Danforth, there are a lot of driveways there. So you have people taking the light rail, who drive to the light rail and they park in the other parking spaces that are not, you know, driveways and they leave the whole day. Sometimes they do, they go out on the weekends, wherever they're going about their day and they're gone for a very long time, to the point where there is no parking for you when you come home unless it's two blocks away. I was talking to my committee woman and we were talking about residential parking. I'm not sure if that's the answer. We talked about zone parking. I'm not sure if that's the answer. I look at the way the bike lanes are positioned, that took up some parking. I look at the way the city bikes are positioned, the city bikes came on Princeton Avenue and took up seven parking spaces. And if it wasn't for us advocating against that, it would have, it would have been 10. And then they reduced it again, so now it's five. But I mean, it's ridiculous. So the city needs to do better when it comes to creative ways and they need to know how to say no sometimes. Because putting city bikes all over the city, you know, especially in Ward A, is not necessarily a good thing. It's taking up parks that we don't have to give away. And so we need to make sure that whatever we do, whatever solution we find, it has to be a solution that's good for everyone, not just me and not just anyone else who wants to represent you. So that, that has to do with talking to the community and see what suggestions they have for their community because they know what's best for their neighborhoods. I've talked to residents in Country Village, they're having a huge problem with parking. I talked to residents in Currys Woods, they're having a huge problem with parking. So it seems to be a problem throughout the ward. So what I wanted to say is, the city with the residents have to formulate a plan that directly, you know, finds a way to create more parking spaces or take away things that took our parking spaces away. We don't need city bikes all over.
Denise?
Parking, parking is definitely an issue throughout the city, definitely in Ward A. As they discussed with the development on the Boulevard and Custer Avenue, I had a meeting with residents of Custer Avenue and one of their main concerns was the parking and the plans for that development. So this is something that's really at the forefront of residents' minds here in Ward A. With regards to the light rail stops, I believe that when we were making these plans and we agreed to allow the light rail to come, that there should have been parking provided because there is an issue with people parking their cars all day and now the residents have nowhere to park. So that's a big issue. And, you know, when we implement these new plans, we need to make sure that we're taking that into account. And I understand that there's a need to go green and to reduce our carbon footprint and, you know, for us to ride more bikes and take public transportation. But that's not easy for some people, especially the residents of Ward A. We live in a ward where a lot of the residents are not here because they just recently moved here or because they work in New York, so this was convenient. We live in a ward where people are here because this is where they've been. They work. They need their cars to travel to work. We are more of a driving ward than some areas of the city and we need our cars and, you know, that's not taken into account. So we have to make sure that there's a balance between us being green and finding alternate means of transportation and also making sure that our residents have available what they need. With regards to parking, maybe we need to look at some city-owned lots in Ward A. The city owns property throughout, throughout the city that some things are blank. There's nothing on there. Is there a way, I don't know if it can be done or cannot be done, but is there a way that we can have city parking? Maybe residents pay a dollar a day. I think it would be worth it and it would create some more revenue for the city. If I can park my car, if there's a car I don't use that often, maybe I can park it in a city-owned lot for a dollar a day as a resident, $30 a month. We just created more revenue and now we got some of those cars off the street from the families who do have multiple vehicles that they're not using every day. So we need new, new ideas with regards to parking.
Denise, I didn't plan it this way, but because we're running close on time, the next topic is the revow.
Okay.
How do you believe it'll affect Greenville? What's the citywide impact and what can the city do or the council do to lessen the impact?
Okay. In 2010, I held a seminar with the city tax assessor at that time at the Bethune Center to discuss the revow. And at that time, it was very quiet. Most people didn't really understand what that process was. So we had residents come out and we informed them that this was something that was coming. And at that time, that process was start, was stopped. And now it has started again and it's being mandated from the state and this is a major concern to our residents. I am hoping that it does not negatively impact Greenville. The point of the revow is to keep things balanced throughout the city and to make sure that everyone is paying their fair share. So I am not hoping that our million-dollar homes will incur any misfortune either, but at the same time, I want to make sure that those of us who are in areas like Ward A and Ward F are not then priced out based on property taxes. So one of the things that we need to do, while we do not control that revow process, we need to make sure that our residents are informed. We need to make sure that they understand that people are coming around knocking on their door, what they're there for, how that process works, how these new taxes and guidelines are going to be worked out. We need to make sure that after those revows are done and they receive their new tax bill, if they're not satisfied, they need to know that that's not the end-all, be-all, that you can still do a tax appeal. So we need to make sure that those resources are available for our residents. I'm currently working with some tax attorneys in the area and, you know, we want to make sure that the residents can call on people who have more experience with these things and let them know what their options are because we don't want to be left out and we don't want to be moved out. We want to stay in Greenville. We love Greenville and we want to make Greenville great.
Pam?
So the revow is very scary. Just, you know, hearing it that it will happen, I remember the whole, you know, the process of getting it to happen and how people were really scared. And then when it was announced that it was going to happen, it really got real. And so I want to say that, again, education and information is key. We have to make sure that we're hosting informational seminars, workshops, so we can let our seniors, homeowners, let them all know that if you're negatively affected by the revow, here are some resources. Here is this application process you have to fill out and I'll walk you through that. And so there needs to be a team to address that revow because it is going to happen and when it does, we have to be ready to funnel that information to our residents so they don't have to go through it alone. I mean, sometimes all people want is someone to be there to walk with them through the process and it makes the process so much less scarier. So informational sessions, workshops, and making sure that our people of Ward A and throughout Jersey City, I'm running for Ward A, but every resident in Jersey City should make sure they're armed with that information so they can do a tax appeal and fight and continue to stand up and say, listen, I'm not going to be priced out. And so this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to stay throughout the course and I'm going to get the job done and we're going to do it together. So I think that information and education, we just have to make sure we're funneling that in the community.
Very good. And Rick, as it turns out, you're going to, you're going to not just finish this topic, but you're also going to close up by giving your closing statement. So take your time. We have time, but we started at Denise before and now we're winding backwards. So you're going to finish with this topic and then, and then give your closing statement.
The revow, the revow affected my mother-in-law very hard. We're playing, we paid $250,000 with the house we live in 17 years ago. We're paying nearly $10,000 in taxes right now. It doesn't work. The mayor kept the taxes in downtown and the Heights lower off the backs of residents of Greenville. So I think the revow that's out now and when the new one is coming, God forbid, I hope it don't hurt us anymore because we will be priced out, out of Jersey City. Once again, my name is Rick Johnson. I'm running for Jersey City Councilman. I was born and raised in Jersey City. I lived in Jersey City all my life. This is our city. This is our people that's hurting in Jersey City as far as drugs, addiction, crime, what's going on in the city. People are being forced out because the rents are too high to live in Jersey City. If you make me your councilman in Jersey City, I promise you, I will work hard, will have the cops out of the cars, doing their job. We need the cops to live in the city, not take our tax dollars out of the city after two years. They need to be in the city for at least five years, getting out of their cars, patrolling, meeting the people, knowing who belong in the city and who doesn't belong in the city. The crime is back, is running amok in Jersey City because no one cares anymore. You need people like me that care about the city, that was born and raised in the city, that would do the job. I work in Hudson County Corrections. I see the same guys coming in and out of jail every day because there's nothing for them to do. They need job training, some type of life skills. These kids need training with their hands so they could get a job, not hanging on the corners, smoking weed, drinking every day. The parks are horrible. The parks haven't been cleaned up in a while. You see busted bottles everywhere you go. You don't see this in any other town. We got Balm right next to Jersey City and Balm looks totally different from Jersey City. No one's hanging on the corners because the cops are doing their job. You got Union City, another town, of course, Hoboken's another town, of course. You don't see this there, only in Jersey City and only in the urban areas. So if you elect me as your councilman in Jersey City, I promise you, I'll do a better job and we'll get things moving. Thank you.
Very good. Pam?
So first, I want to thank Hudson Media Group for inviting us here today for this debate. Thank you, Pat. And thank you, Jerry, for being a great moderator, even though they tried to make me scared of you, but it's okay. So I know I gave a little introduction about why I'm running and I gave you my family's background, so I'll give you a little more. I've always been active in my community, from the time I was a candy striper at Greenville Hospital. And so my parents taught me that. That's in my DNA. It's something that I can't help but do. I watched my parents as a child, whether it was the mother who didn't have a babysitter or whether it was the single family who was struggling and needed some food, or if it was the senior who needed their, their snowplow. My parents were those people for the community and I followed in their footsteps. And I have a proven track record of being a leader, of being an advocate and being an activist when it's not so popular. I roll up my sleeves and I'm in those trenches and I get the job done with the help of my people. And so I want to be your advocate. I want to be your councilperson and I'm asking for your vote. Don't vote for me because you know me and I'm your friend. Don't vote for me because you think I'm cute. Don't vote for me because you know my family. Vote for me because you see my work in the community. Vote for me because I have done and stood and cried for you and loved you and done right by you. So vote for me because I've always stood with you and I will keep standing. And so whether or not I'm elected on November 7th, on November 8th, I can wake up in the morning and I still have my integrity. I still have my morals. I have not wavered for being a fighter for my people. And when I say my people, I'm not talking about just black people because I fought long and hard for the people of Ward A and in Jersey City. And I will continue to fight whether I'm elected or not, but I am asking for your vote. Vote for someone who will not make promises on the campaign trail, but someone who can say, I will continue to do what I've always done for you. Thank you.
Denise?
Again, my name is Denise Ritley. I believe that Ward A is a very complex ward. We have areas of Ward A that are seen as the more expensive, more affluent areas, and then we have other areas that are not. And I think that we need a councilperson that is able to move between all areas of our ward. And I believe that I can do that. We need someone that's not afraid to talk to someone standing on the street corner and is not afraid to go down into Port Liberté and still have a conversation with that person. And I believe that I have the ability to do that. I can handle myself in a conference room or on the street. It doesn't matter because I am a people person and I adjust to people. I also believe that, you know, living in Ward A, we need people that are engaged in the community. And I've done community events right here in Ward A. So it's good to be involved and involved in different things and throughout the city and other organizations, but what have you done for Ward A lately? I have done things specific for Ward A. And I believe that we need someone that's going to fight for us because this is our time and we need to focus on the things that are happening within our ward, not to neglect the rest of the city, but we need to focus on Ward A because we have to make up for lost time. And we need someone that's going to fight for us. I come from a strong family. I'm the daughter of a former police lieutenant. My mom is in healthcare, both in unions. And I believe that, you know, that work ethic has been instilled in me throughout my entire life. And I believe that if I am elected November 7th, that I will be the best choice for Ward A. I will work hard. I will make sure that we have an inclusive government and I will make sure that Ward A has access to information and the resources that it needs. And not only will I do that, but I want us to work together. So it's not a one-woman show, but if I am elected, this will be a community partnership and our residents will be represented well. Thank you.
Denise and Pam and Rick, I want you to know that, that I was, I was elected to the city council in Greenville. And at some point in my time that I served, I decided that either I was going to move up or I was going to move out. And, and I ran for mayor and won one ward, Greenville, but I won it by such a tremendous majority that it pushed me to become the mayor of Jersey City. So don't underestimate the strength of the voters of Greenville. They're a very, very important part of our city. That's why I still live in the Greenville section. It's a great part of the city. In spite of the waterfront and everything else, it's still the place that I want to live and I'm sure that it's the same place that the three of you want to live. So I'm happy to, to be here today. I wasn't the boogeyman and went after everybody. I really tried to prepare for this so that you all had an opportunity to give your own opinion as to what, what you believe is best for the city and best for the people of Greenville. So I congratulate all three of you. You're great debaters, great speakers, and I think no matter what happens on Election Day, Greenville will be well represented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody for being here this evening and watching us. You saw the debate. You saw the interaction. I'm not sure that you saw it some of the other wards, but I think you're going to see that the people of Greenville are much more sophisticated than, than the rest of the wards. We're not, we're, we're not into battles. We're into more community service and doing what's best for the people of, of Jersey City and the Greenville section. So thank you again and I hope you all get out and vote on, in November. And we have a lot of candidates onto that ballot, from the Congress to the governor and all the way down. I'm hoping that you will remember that we have to vote for everybody and every seat that's available.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.